This conference will now be recorded.
Sandwiches.
Did you? Did you recognize the sandwiches?
Thank you. What kind of sandwiches we talking about? I don't can't really have it right now.
Clerk, please start the recording. Today is Wednesday, June 14th, 2023, and I'd like to call today's work session to order. Tonight, we have Burke presenting. Is Burke on the call with us? Okay. Please welcome Catherine Gouts. Hopefully, I didn't butcher that Catherine. Virginia Gleason and Brian Murphy from Burke Consulting. They will be presenting virtually the Ridgefield Police Services Study this evening. Oh, yes, we do want a roll call, don't you? You want one? Yeah, clerk, can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Fox.
President.
Councilmember Casper.
Here. But I love my glasses in the car, so I gotta go grab them.
Present.
Councilmember Servini.
She's just running a few minutes late.
Mayor Strobin.
Present.
Thank you, clerk. All right. Please welcome Catherine, Virginia, and Brian from Burke Consulting.
Hi there. Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name's Catherine Gits. I'm with Burke Consulting. My colleague Brian may be a few minutes late. If he pops in, I can allow him to introduce himself. But I'll allow Virginia and Tag Gleason to introduce themselves, and then we can go ahead and get started.
Hi, I'm Virginia Gleason, based here in Seattle, retired from working with four different police departments, and do consulting now along with Burke on various issues related to policing.
And I'm Tag Gleason, also based in Seattle. Forty years of police service and a subject matter expert for Burke Consulting.
Thank you. Could you go to the next slide? So we've done some brief introductions. I'll provide a little bit of context for the study. We'll talk a little bit about our methods and some guiding principles, and then key findings. And then we'll go through each of the major elements in a potential contract. And then Virginia, I'll turn it to Virginia and Tag, and they can talk a little bit about potential benefits and risks. And then we'll have time for questions. If you'd like, I could, we could pause each slide for questions, or we could move ahead and hold those to the end, or if there are questions that arise, we can certainly take a pause.
Any requests on that?
I think we can just pop in as we have questions.
Okay. Okay. Can you go to the next slide? So the purpose of the study was to explore the feasibility of the city of Ridgefield to provide police services for the city of La Center. So we evaluated the different elements to consider in a contract, and we identified some potential benefits and some concerns. We, one thing we looked at is population and trends in calls for service in both cities, and looked at the impact of growth in not only the city of Ridgefield, but the, the region on the Ridgefield Police Department. So, as you know, this is, a contractual relationship is one option that the city of La Center is exploring. So we're looking at staffing, contract terms. I mentioned potential, potential benefits and risks. And we do want to consider the, the context of the region, growth in commercial and residential major retailers that are coming to the area and how that will impact the police department as is. Could you go to the next slide? Thank you. So we did quite a few interviews. We interviewed the interim chief there in La Center, the former mayor in La Center, several members of the Ridgefield Police Department, and several partner agencies, such as the municipal court in Battleground and Cressa, the Emergency Communications Agency down there. We also did some research reviewing other interlocal agreements between two cities or between counties and cities. And Virginia has worked on quite a few of these up here in King County and could speak to her experience as well. We did ride along with a couple of officers to both cities and got a great tour. So we, and heard their personal experience as well. I'll pause briefly. I'll let Brian, Brian join, I'll just let him introduce himself and, and we can continue. He can, he can jump in a little bit, and then we can, yeah.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize for being late. My previous meeting went a little bit long. Happy to be with you this evening, Catherine. Why don't you carry on, and I'll just follow along and enjoy the discussion.
Okay. Thank you. We can go to the next slide. These are the guiding principles that we are incorporating, that we did incorporate in our, yeah.
This is Councilmember Boyle. I was curious with the interviews that you guys did. You said you interviewed several other agencies, and I would assume Ridgefield being one of them. Did you guys do any interviews with any of the other police departments that are currently fulfilling any of our vacancies with shifts that we have?
We did not. No, we did not.
Okay. Thank you.
No, thank you. Yeah, good question. Um, so these are some principles that, based on our interviews and based on our input from Ridgefield Police Department and folks in La Center that we work to incorporate in our analysis and our report. The first is that officers working in La Center would be Ridgefield Police Department employees and supervised by the Ridgefield Police Chief. The city of Ridgefield would coordinate all messaging and communications as a part of that organization. Ridgefield Police Department would provide a uniform level of service across, across both cities. It would essentially extend its level of service to La Center, not provide a different level. And as in any contractual relationship, shared expectations and processes for communication would be really important to establish and, you know, provide a basis for success.
Could you explain a little bit further about what the messaging would be?
I think the point there is that this, this point in general is important to the city of Ridgefield and the city manager, that they speak with one voice, they, they have coordinated messaging, and just reflecting that as one department in that city, that it would be part of that kind of overall city of Ridgefield messaging. Does that make, does that help?
Well, are you talking like PIO type of, of issues where there's media context to it? Or are we talking about a broader scale of mission, vision statements?
I think this relates more to public information, as you mentioned, like a PIO type function, that that would be coordinated, you know, along with other departments in the city. Just that it would be, you know, one, one department, one team, one part of the organization there. And those employees would, those officers that worked in La Center would be part of that team.
Okay.
You can go to the next slide. These are some key findings based on our interviews and our research and our analysis that the city of Ridgefield, in particular, is growing rapidly and will have to address growing public safety needs regardless. The proposal for contractual services would be advantageous for both cities because of things like shared costs, coordinated policing, and some growth opportunities for staff, which we heard come up in quite a few conversations. There are some concerns to be mindful of, including capacity in the department. As it grows, there's a lot of state mandates, there's a lot of processes, there's a lot of internal initiatives to work on. Staffing considerations, you know, they would have to hire up, they'd have to add staff, and that takes time. And some systems limitations. I think it would be to work out a process to make sure that they can collect data and track it and, you know, have that data available so that it would be reflective of calls in each community, and it would, you know, provide good reports for the city of La Center.
Is there something in addition to what's already in place countywide that, that would be needed for the systems?
Virginia, do you want to, could you talk a little bit about this?
So one of the limitations we're seeing has to do with Cressa's ability to have a single Ridgefield Police Department and be able to segregate out the La Center calls from the Ridgefield calls. It will, in order to get accurate statistics related to each city, it will require the officers to sign out of one system and sign, sign back in with the Ridgefield credentials for one and La Center credentials to be able to get extremely accurate crime data. Otherwise, if it's all put just because of the particular CAD and RMS system that they have at Cressa, it would be a huge administrative burden for them to have to go through call by call by call and sort of divide them out. So Chief Richardson gave us some ideas of ways that they could maybe mark different calls to make them easier to segregate out. But the system itself doesn't, it doesn't lend it to easily be able to track things with the two different cities. We're looking at workarounds on ways that there can be searchable information in the system, or it's possible that the officers will just have to log out of the one system as they, if they toggle between cities. But that's just a little bit of a system limitation, and that's based on the specific CAD RMS project, product that Clark County has.
Okay.
Okay, you can, oh, you can go ahead. Thank you. So these next slides will just touch on the different elements in a contract and have a few thoughts on each of those. So this one is about the service delivery model. And I mentioned a little bit earlier that in, in this model, Ridgefield Police Department would extend its service level to La Center. It would basically treat La Center as it does, as it treats the city of Ridgefield, and provide one level of service. So to provide 24/7 coverage, an additional six patrol officers would be needed. So that's the number of officers that we included in our estimates. Two positions would be recommended for additional records and administrative support. In the two cities expressed interest in potentially adding a detective position to bring some work in-house and provide an opportunity for staff, a growth opportunity. Next slide, please. These maps just show a little bit of context, which you're obviously familiar with, but just showing Ridgefield, on, on the left there, Ridgefield and La Center in comparison to each other, just showing the full, the full scope of the service area for Ridgefield PD. So Ridgefield and La Center there on the left, and a detailed closer map of La Center on the right. Next slide. So each city has several contracts with outside service, service providers. We mentioned Cressa, also with Clark County Sheriff, and with the Battleground Municipal Court. So in general, it's, would be recommended that Ridgefield PD manage one contract with most of these service providers to cover both cities rather than having two independent contracts. With the exception of the Battleground Municipal Court, it's based on some input from court staff and some interviews. There are few costs that La Center would continue to pay directly, such as for the jail and for towing and impound. Next slide. Ridgefield PD would maintain, maintain all police reports, and they would prepare regular reports for La Center City Council and for staff. If the La Center City Council had requests, they could go to the mayor and then pass, be passed along to the Ridgefield City Manager, so they'd have that relationship there. And the center mayor could meet regularly with the chief and the Ridgefield City Manager at these meetings. That would be an opportunity to review reports or other data, or to ask questions, or bring up concerns, or pass along information that the, the mayor is, wants to speak directly to the chief about. Next slide. Liability and indemnification are important in any contract. In this case, the two cities would provide mutual indemnity for the actions of each government. And another thing that we saw in these, this type of interlocal agreement is outlining a process for resolving any disputes. And that can be determined by the two cities with the advice of legal staff or legal, you know, legal service.
Sorry, Catherine, can you go back one more slide?
Sure.
To the request from the La Center City Council would come through the La Center mayor to the Ridgefield City Manager. Can you explain the background behind that a little bit more?
Sure, that's, that's based on some input from the Ridgefield City Manager. I guess to have, the intent would be to have, you know, a single point of contact or, or not, so that many requests or things can really come, come directly to the city manager, and they're sort of, you know, more formal process for getting that information to the manager. And then there would be an opportunity for the manager and the chief, who, the manager is the supervisor of the chief, for the, for those two folks to meet with the mayor of La Center and, you know, talk in further detail about any requests.
So are we talking like something like as simple as like additional support for city functions? Or does this come at a higher level than that, or I guess?
I think one thing we had talked about is there could be, you know, an agreement about what kind of requests are, you know, the simple ones. Could those go directly to the chief? Or like, what kind of requests kind of get elevated to come to the manager? And I think that there, there could, there could be a process to decide, like, you know, is it a question? Or is it a simple request? Or is it, if it's something more complicated, like a change in service level or a concern, I think those, those should really go, I think the idea is that those would go to the manager, city manager and the chief. Virginia or Brian, is there anything that you would add here?
Well, I certainly agree that this should be.
No, go ahead.
Okay. I was gonna say, I agree that this should be the process for, you know, policy and procedural level questions. But, you know, if our, if our Public Works Director is dealing with a, a traffic issue, I would hope that he could contact the chief or the on-duty supervisor directly and just make that request. And of course, it's their discretion at that point whether they move forward with that request or not. But, yeah, I, I would like to see the, the simple staff level questions be handled in a more timely manner, in a more simple manner, that we're not bothering the mayor and the, and the city manager for traffic cones and things like that.
Yeah, I think that was the intent is exactly what you're saying. I think it was the concern if, if it is something that, you know, potentially has a budget impact that is more than de minimis, where someone's asking for a special emphasis patrol or for officers to be dedicated to something new, that those would go through a more formalized process. But the day-to-day things like you're describing would be definitely, you know, peer-to-peer without having to go through all that other process.
Okay. I would like to ask just one more question on a previous slide, since we've already paused the whole show for this. The, uh, the towing and, and impound costs. To me, I would rather have the chief of police or whoever her designee is taking a look at those and approving them. And if, if it can't be contained within the existing contract, because if it's going to go to Maria or Brian, they're not going to know a lot of times what that tow bill was, was for. They're just going to see it, and then they'd have to make a phone call to RPD anyway to do it. So, you know, the other stuff is not as, as time-sensitive, paying for the court costs or the, or the jail costs so that we can, we can verify that. But something as simple as towing bills, I, I would be more comfortable if, if Ridgefield just took care of that for us. And if it was an extravagant expense, obviously, we could, we could deal with that. But most tow bills are not, not huge.
And does the city of La Center have a tow appeal, sort of an appeals process through city administration where people can appeal their tow bills?
We're not, we're not aware of that, and we also don't even know the last time we received a tow bill.
Okay. We can, we can definitely follow up on the, the towing and impound costs. Because sometimes if there's, like, if there's a DUI arrest and they go ahead and they impound the vehicle, often the costs go directly to the person whose vehicle is being impounded. But other times, if, for whatever reason, they don't pay, it ends up reverting back to the city. So it would be good to have some sort of a, a plan for dealing with tow bills that end up getting charged to the city, but certainly can do follow-up on that. If it's, especially if it's not something that comes up all the time, I don't think probably is a, you know, a major deal breaker to any sort of agreement, but we'll follow up.
Any other questions? The next piece is about compensation. We can move ahead to that. So we have a few slides here with some details on what this could look like, and some charts and some numbers. But to estimate what La Center would pay in a contractual relationship, we looked at two options for sharing costs. And the estimates based on these two options turned out to be pretty similar. But in one, La Center would pay the full direct cost of six, the six patrol officers that are needed for 24/7 service, plus a share of supervision and overhead. The second would be that La Center would pay a share of the total department costs. So in either scenario, La Center would pay for patrol staff, their vehicles and equipment, and then a share of supervisory and support personnel, supplies and services, facility, space, and contracted services. Next. So this chart on the right here is, is providing a comparison for the estimated cost of a fully-staffed police department in La Center, and that's the solid line. And that's compared to the estimated cost of contractual service, which is represented by these two dotted lines, which are the two different cost-sharing options, which you can see are pretty similar. Over time, either option would provide a savings for La Center compared to the cost of its own department. And that really is based on a few things. Shared supervision, there would be one chief instead of two. There would be a shared lieutenant and shared supervision from sergeants, shared support staff, shared facility space, and shared contractual services. You can see that here, your one is higher, and that includes some one-time vehicle and equipment purchases. These may not happen all right away. This cost may actually, you know, be spread depending on when, on the timing of hiring and when hiring happens. Can you go to the next slide? This is a similar look at cost estimates for the Ridgefield Police Department. Again, that solid line is showing the status quo, assuming that they do grow to address, you know, an assumed growing need because the, the city's growing. And then the, the dotted lines are showing the share for Ridgefield PD or to be in a contractual relationship. It's, so it does provide, we estimate it provides a financial benefit for Ridgefield as well compared to the status quo. Next slide, please. These are the numbers, the cost estimates that are supporting the charts that we just saw, showing an estimate for La Center's department budget on the top, and then the two options underneath and showing a, a cost savings over time. The, the La Center department budget is based on being fully-staffed. It does include some estimated savings. It does include some estimated savings based on historical trends. So may not completely line up with the current budget, but we do have all the information and we just are assuming some under expenditure here. That's why it may look a little different. Next slide. This is a similar table for the Ridgefield Police Department. The top would be if it were to not provide service to La Center, but continue to grow to meet the community need. And then its share of a contractual relationship for either of these cost options. And it similarly shows a savings over time. Next slide. So in regards to contract startup, hiring new officers can take time. And Ridgefield PD estimates that it would have to use overtime to provide its standard level of service in the beginning. This chart is an example to show some milestones in a potential contract, including when new officers could be on patrol. It can take over a year from hiring a new officer to that person being on patrol. This depends on some things like the pool of candidates, the, and the number of spots in the law enforcement academy. Ridgefield could potentially get lateral officers and that takes a lot less time. And it could get, potentially get additional spots in the academy, which would, would speed up this process. So this is an example, it's kind of on the, the long end of how long this process can take. Just to, to provide a visual for that. And next slide. So the, a final piece here on the contract elements is the agreement term. So we, we think a multi-year contract would provide benefits for both cities. And we have based our estimates on a five-year contract. It would give Ridgefield PD time to hire staff and to incorporate them and, and provide, you know, get used to providing the, the service to both cities and would provide predictability for both cities. Regarding the costs, the two cities could review actual costs that were incurred each year and then adjust costs for the following year. For example, if hiring happens at a different pace than planned, the costs may be different. And La Center should really pay its share of actual costs. And any contract, yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, I just was gonna mention the last point about the timing on an option to terminate and then, but please go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, I just. Who came up with the idea of the five years? Because that's what I was thinking as far as the hiring process, like if that doesn't go as planned, who kind of picked that? Because if both cities are getting a cost savings more over time, wouldn't it make sense to? I mean, I'm just curious, who picked the five years?
That's what we selected as based on some examples we've seen of a kind of standard term. Sometime, it could be a five years with a renewal. It could be, you know, different periods with either an automatic renewal or, or a time for renewal. But that was what we assumed.
Okay. Is there like negotiation on that part as far as starting out with a certain, a different, like a 10-year plan with an extended, you know, with a, a chance to renew? I'm just curious.
I think so. Do you recall, Brian or Virginia? I think, I, I don't think, I think this is, you know, an element to, to discuss for sure.
I would, I would agree. Say all of these points are really, you know, a starting point for a conversation. We really wouldn't recommend a term shorter than five years because of the startup required. And then I, I guess I would just note that the, the right to terminate sort of makes the term of the contract a little bit, you know, a little bit less weighty, I suppose, because there is that right to terminate and that's fairly common as well. And we would hope that if it's a five-year contract or a 10-year contract, the cities are entering into it with a good faith of, of retaining that contract for that period. But if things aren't, you know, aren't satisfactory to either party, there is that opportunity to terminate as well.
Okay, thank you.
You go to the next slide? I'm actually gonna turn this over to Virginia and Tag and they can talk a little bit about the potential benefits and a few risks.
So having worked with several different contract relationships, with the sheriff's office, with, you know, a dozen or so contracts, as well as with some cities working jointly, such as Snoqualmie and North Bend and, you know, Carnation and Duval. What we see and the benefits of the contracting are some of the things Catherine already talked about. You get the cost of savings with shared staff, shared space, some economies of scale on training and different things. And that can be really helpful. I'll let my husband Tag talk a little bit about the conversations he had with officers about benefits that they really saw and why they're strongly supporting this merger of La Center and Ridgefield for police services.
And a benefit to start with, both organizations seem to have a compatible culture. There's a focus on providing a level of service typically not seen in policing. And they were all committed to continuing that. So they also recognize that it'll take a while to staff up both organizations for the growth that's occurring in the area. And in this situation, it's coming and they're, they don't want their organizational cultures or the level of service they can provide to be adversely affected. And when you're upstaffing an organization of any size, when those new people are being brought on, it's a sensitive issue to maintain the service level expectations that both jurisdictions have. And the growth is going to occur down there. And from looking at at least the operational issues involved, it appears that the type of police situations that could arise will become more complex with the casino in the area, increased traffic going through the area. This gives the staff of the PD an opportunity to develop the skills over time that will be needed for that. And also a big issue is giving time to bring on new people who can acclimate to the new service expectations, which are pretty high.
And I think that in the smaller departments, sometimes part of that balance is officers all really like to be able to provide really good service to the department. And a lot of times you don't have the time to be able to do that the way you want to. So on the one hand, what a lot of the officers like is they really get to know the community. They feel like they can do some problem-oriented policing, some community policing. But you, every once in a while, having a high-profile event, it makes you feel really good about the, the, how you're protecting the community. So a larger department gives them that balance of, of, I'm not saying crime is a good thing, but there are some times when there is this satisfaction of saying, I did this thing that was, that really provided value to my community because there was a robbery or, you know, we were able to solve a crime problem in the community. The larger department gives that just perfect balance. And there's a lot of reasons that the La Center and Ridgefield are really attractive for people to come work there. There's a sense of community values. There's a sense of support from the elected officials that you don't see a lot of places. And especially in some of your neighboring agencies, there's officers looking at this area to say, I want to work in that community, but I don't want to just be doing house checks. I want to have a little bit of, of, of variety in what I can do and maybe be able to develop my skills as detective or work on a regional team. And growing the, the departments would allow for more of those opportunities. And I, I think right now retain, attracting and retaining staff is a challenge for everyone. And this would help to both attract and retain staff.
And you would have a highly experienced police chief, who in our conversations with her, we found her to be an excellent pick. She's experienced, she's from the area, she understands what's going on there. And it's a propitious opportunity to combine to address the future. And it seems to be coming at the right time with the right people.
One of the other things is, you know, having used a lot of kind of patchwork resources to provide service to the city of La Center as, you know, things have happened over the last couple of years. With some of the new requirements that are out about having some standardization for things like initiating stops, using force, investigating, uses of force, it can be valuable to have a unified command over the people who are providing backup. So when you have that patchwork of people, sometimes at a, at an event that, that might unfortunately require some kind of force be used, or, you know, if unfortunately there was an officer-involved shooting, if you don't have people whose policies are uniform across the board, there's going to be some question about how that was managed and how that will be reviewed. There's a lot more standardization if you have one department with the unified command providing backup to both. Plus, people will know the cities more and if there are unique things going on, whether it's areas that have enhanced crime or a certain way that they are approaching their problem-related policing in the area, it's really valuable to have these two departments or two cities under unified command providing backup to each other.
And politically, from a risk management perspective, the uniformity and consistency will be helpful because often plaintiffs will want to include both jurisdictions in any kind of action. But they'll also try to point out disparities in policies, staffing, training, to demonstrate what's, what perspective is more favorable for that case. And here you'd have the uniformity to say this is just the way business is done. Good risk management practice.
So any questions about the benefits?
I have a question about, more about, back to kind of the contract term and the ability to terminate it within like six to 12 months. How does that look? Or I don't have any clue what police contracts look like, so that's why I'm asking. When that happens, let's say that was to happen, does one side, the person, whoever, basically La Center in this case, do we get to, you have, now you have these six extra officers and let's say over, after this time period or after so much time, maybe three, four extra officers. Now you guys maybe can't afford that and maybe we need to have some and maybe we can afford to keep some. Do we get to have some of those officers kind of come over to La Center at that point? So that we're not going from zero, you know, from great coverage to now nothing? I mean, how does that kind of look for a transition from? Because obviously, yeah, five years to me doesn't seem like that long. But also, if you're gonna, if we have this in the contract, then that, it doesn't really matter how long the contract is. If anybody can terminate it within that short amount of time. So what does that mean for La Center and how can we make sure that we're still covered after that?
So there's a couple of different ways that you can manage employees who, if there's a downsizing. So there's, there's sort of these tiers of personnel rules. So one is the civil service rules. So state civil service rules have a process for governing when a department downsizes and where those people would go. And unfortunately, way back in the days when we had to lay off police officers in the past, I had to go through this. And so there is a way where if the city said, we have too many and we're choosing not to keep them, the jurisdiction that previously contracted with them, they are offered there first. So that's one way. There's also, it'll depend, the next overlay is what might be in a labor contract. Almost always the, i- if there are layoffs, they're going to be done in order of seniority. And not seniority number of years worked, but actually number of years worked in that department. So there, there, there's a whole way to manage excess employees in the event there's a contract termination.
Okay, thank you.
Time in here, so. So the expectation would be that as part of the negotiations, this section would include a dispute resolution process. So it wouldn't just be in a vacuum, but all of a sudden there's a six-month termination, a 12-month termination. Ordinarily, there'd be an expectation that the parties would be in good faith, try to resolve. Maybe the next step would be mediation. Maybe you have arbitration and there's a, there's a process there. And so you usually see short-term termination clauses where there's the potential for going into the contract that there's going to be some conflict. What I'm hearing here is that there's this expectation that the communities are coming into this in good faith, trying to resolve this potential issue. And so your question, the good one, in the sense that a short-term terminate, termination does have significant impacts. You've already budgeted, for example, for the next year. And so ordinarily, again, I recognize this is part of the negotiations, I may or may not be part of that. But ordinarily, you'd see something like this have a kind of a longer term, like more of a 12-month termination. I think that lends itself, I think, what you're asking about, because there are some other implications. And the individual brought up, you know, contract impacts with your union negotiations, for example. So again, those are subject to negotiation, but those are good questions, but again, it's, it's a process.
Sure, sure. I was just curious, you know, how that looks, because it just seems awfully quick, like not in short notice. And like you said, I mean, to my knowledge, the cost of this is not, it's going to cost us the majority of our police budget. It's not like we have all this extra, we're just sitting over here saving, saving for that cold rainy day when we have to, you know, maybe pull up our own officers out of a hat, you know? So it's like, we have to just be careful with that money and making sure that, yeah, we still have service. And yeah, it makes sense that that would be part of that. So thanks.
For example, when the city of North Bend decided to terminate their contract with King County, they discussed it for two or three years before they actually gave the notice to say, we are going to, and again, it was all in good faith, there was discussions about, you know, you're doing certain things and your capacity doesn't meet our needs anymore and we think we want to do something different. But there was, there was years of discussion before they finally said, we want to ring the bell that now this, this termination period begins and gave everyone, you know, plenty of time to plan and to take appropriate measures to make sure their city was still protected.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. I would hope that it would go that way. I mean, I, yeah, that's, makes sense.
We have just one more slide, I, I think, that we can speak to.
So this is the slide that's not so much fun, is the potential benefits. And there are, you know, these, your cities are growing rapidly. And so having the ability to plan on providing the amount of service for rapidly growing communities, that's, that's hard enough as it is. But then there is a lot going on in policing right now. There's a lot going on with the state, with the attorney general's office and with some of the expectations that I'd say primarily are coming out of Olympia. Sometimes they come out of county councils, but right now they're primarily coming from the state where they are adding layers of reporting requirements and training requirements onto individual departments that in some, some cases could be straining the ability to provide service. So for example, one of the, the items under discussion is if they're going to mandate that all officers wear body cameras, there's a whole lot of administrative burden that goes with kicking off a body worn camera process. There's storage costs. There's storage costs, reduction costs, huge public disclosure costs. So that there's just, some of that can, can strain your ability to provide service. The other thing that is becoming less of a bottleneck on the hiring process are available slots in the academy. So they started with the rollout of regional academies. The first one opened in the tri-cities, and currently there are spots available there. And I think, and there's discussion about having a regional facility right in Clark County. So as those regional training facilities open, I think we'll see less of a backlog of people waiting to get into academies. Cause right now, the, the chart that Catherine was showing about that from the time that you actually have an person be your employee to get them through the academy and then have them do their probationary training, so they can be out on the street fulfilling up patrol district can take a while, I think that's going to shorten up a little. But that has to be balanced with all these additional administrative burdens that are coming. The other thing that I mentioned before is, this is a really favorable place to, to live and work. You've got a, you know, in a lot of ways, a better quality of life than you see a lot of other places in the state. And balancing that quality of life with cost of living is really appealing. So I think getting rid of that, that backlog at the state academy, being able to put more people in, being able to attract lateral officers and have the training officers, they're just, it's just going to take some planning. And then you always hope that because of the nature of the job, it only takes a couple of bad injuries that create, you know, six or eight months of vacancy that, you know, create a little bit more strain on your department. On the flip side, part of the benefit of having a larger department is it, it helps you get through the peaks and valleys of staffing when you have a larger pool of people to be able to, you know, deal with a short absence or someone who's out on family leave. Hiring, hiring processes. Ridgefield works with an agency that, that does testing throughout the year, and they are streamlining some of their processes related to civil, their internal civil service, so that they're getting people in the door a little bit faster. And now that we can get them in the academy, some of those risks are left, less, but they still exist. And we could have another, you know, major nationwide blowout about policing that could sort of dry up the pipeline of people wanting to come in. But those are, you know, just something that neither city really has a lot of control over. And then the last thing, just about the data, the particular CAD RMS system that Caressa uses, it's called EIS, we met with the administrator of the system and we talked quite a bit about what are the abilities for them to make some changes and do some programming that would, you know, spit out really easy, quick, up-to-date crime stats for each jurisdiction. And that's, you know, it's not impossible, but it's not as simple as you would think it probably should be. Maybe over time, if, as, as they update, or there's, you know, a new version, or maybe if they switch CAD and RMS systems, that might be easier in the future. But right now, that takes a little bit of staff work to make sure that you're getting accurate and timely crime data that you, that you'll be able to have to, you know, have those conversations about public safety with the city of Ridgefield. Again, that's another one of those things that I think over time will get better, but right now it's, it's a little bit challenging.
Reports? I guess I question how the reporting cannot be pulled by zip code.
Well, um, there are some ways you can pull the reports. And so sometimes you'll have zip code in CAD data. They tend to work on a different geographic, so each call might not have a zip code associated with it. So if someone is calling in from a cell phone and they're talking about something that's happening at a particular address, there may not be a zip code that is associated with that address that pulls up in the, the way that the PSAP, the Public Safety Answering Point works. There could be other ways of looking at that and maybe spending some additional time to actually extract that data and, you know, put it in a GIS overlay that would allow you to do some things. But that's not currently a capability the system has. So sometimes what they'll do is they, they'll have other ways that they've drawn it out other than zip codes. But it's not going to be by patrol district, and it may not also meet your exact city boundaries. So city boundaries, zip codes, census codes, they don't always match with what your city boundaries are.
But a La Center address would be easy enough to identify versus a Ridgefield address?
Provided the name of the city is in the caller, or and if you're ever interested, I can sort of show you what a CAD printout looks like. It may not, it may not, may not have the city name in there. So there are some systems that actually allow you to use GPS coordinates to be able to pinpoint areas. And then, like I said, then you overlay them on the city map. And then you could, you can actually use a, like a stylus and draw and say, here's everything that happened in that area. That's not a capability that currently is available in Clark County. So we can show some examples about sort of what that raw data is and what is retrievable out of that. Now, once you actually do a crime report and you can do some word searching in the address field, you would be able to do that, but that'd be a little bit of a manual process, but it's definitely doable.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any more questions? Comments?
Yeah, I do have just one more question. I understand that this is a, a high-level overview of the, of the potential for a contract. But was there any thought or any discussion on what the minimum staffing levels would be for both jurisdictions? I'm, I'm assuming that Ridgefield has a minimum staffing level for within their city. Was there any look at what that would look like, you know, even once they became fully staffed and we were well into the contract?
So I think the, and Chief Doria sort of has her vision of, of how she would deploy people and staff, but they would look at La Center as a single beat with the idea that there would be an officer available for that beat 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, how that turns into six FTEs is looking at, you know, a 2008, 2080 hour year. And then you back out, you know, what 24-hour coverage is, what you have in your labor agreement for vacation time, training time, holidays and everything. And as you back that out, the general rule of thumb is for the types of, of schedules that they have is for that one person, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, that takes six FTEs to fill those hours out. Of course, there's always going to be a little bit of, you know, gaps here and there that usually are filled with overtime. But that is, the general rule of thumb is six FTEs for one 24/7 position.
And the additional administrative and records staffing, I'm guessing at this point, is predominantly driven by the new legislation with the additional record keeping and body camera requirements and such?
There's some of that, there's also the public disclosure piece of that as well as our understanding of, for fingerprinting services, which currently Clark County is providing to residents of La Center. Our understanding is Clark County is, is going to sunset that fingerprinting service. So those are all things that take additional administrative time. And then with other things going on, there's been a lot of extra activity related to firearms transfers and, and, you know, concealed pistol license permits. So things like that are part of the additional administrative workload as well.
This is Councilmember Boyle. I just want to say thank you guys again for your presentation. But one more question, just as an overview. Within the things that we control, in your professional opinion, would you say that the benefits are greater than the risks overall? Between the two cities combining?
I, I think so. I think there's a certain quality of life in those two cities that you don't see very many places. And I think how combining these departments helps both cities keep that, that public safety resource for the quality of life. We were both really struck when we rode around the communities and talked to the officers about what they knew and, you know, how they were really dedicated to helping people and their families live safely. And like I say, I'm, maybe I'm get kind of jaded, I did retire out of Oakland, California, and worked at Seattle and some other places. I haven't seen that for a really long time. And it was really, it was really inspiring to talk to these officers. They also knew that there was going to be a little bit of pain in staffing up and getting there. And, and the officers also said, we're willing to suffer a little bit for this greater good for these two cities. And I know that the people, the officers in Ridgefield have a great affection for the city of La Center. And I, it, like I say, for me, it was just great to see that again. And I think my husband, who's I think the best community policing officer there ever was, he came back as well feeling the same thing.
If, if it's going to happen, it seems like, as I said, stars are aligned, so to speak, with committed elected officials, police professionals who are willing to go with the process. And a community that will grow and change. And it would, I think, be positive to get the pieces in place to provide the service that the community has come to expect.
And I think it's also a good thing that, you know, right now, I mean, we really do have low crime in La Center. So I mean, as we have low staffing and we're trying to, you know, increase that over time. I mean, it's not like, there, it's not like Ridgefield's coming into a stressful situation, I believe. I mean, they're coming into a pretty, you know, manageable place that, you know, they know and understand already. It's not, you know, off the beaten path. And, you know, there's some time to grow and evolve together. And I think if, yeah, like you said, communication, understanding the right process that's in place to make sure it works. Because, you know, obviously, you know, they're a huge arms length away, but you know, there needs to be a line of communication that makes it flow for efficiency, so.
It's a forward collaborative, forward-looking collaborative plan.
Yeah, yeah. It's great. Yeah, thank you so much.
This is Councilwoman Servini again, and I concur with the comments that have been said by the, the other council members and your staff. And I thank you for the diligence that you've put into the report. I think I, I agree with your thoughts that were reflecting the opportunity and the strength behind giving the officers the dual municipality coverage and experiences for keeping the, the, the brand-new staff that come on board oftentimes don't have the variety of tasks and assignments that they need to keep them excited about being on the force. And, and that's what's led to many of the departures that we've had in the past. So I would think you'd probably find the same situations in Ridgefield. So I think the broadening of opportunities are, are a big strength for both cities. And keeping that consistency a little bit longer with the officers, giving them that combination of learning and comparing notes of what's going on in both municipalities and learning from, from both. You know, with Ridgefield being a bit, you know, quite a bit larger and growing faster, we can learn from that. You know, it, it seems to have, as you've said, much more wins than it does risks. And at least the risks that you listed on your report seem, in many cases, the risks that would be there anyway, irregardless of whether you were covering La Center with, with the growth that's occurring in Ridgefield. But thank you.
Yeah, this is Councilmember Casberg. I just want to throw out one more, one more thing, which is, thank you for doing this. And I hope it's not lost on anyone listening, that, you know, the questions that we had regarding this are over really fairly minor things, and it's just things that we're trying to, trying to clarify. So I think this was a, I think this was a good report. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay. Well, thank you, Catherine, Virginia, Brian. We appreciate it. The report was done very well. So was your presentation. With that, I'd like to end the city's work session tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
This conference will now be recorded.
All right. All right. Clerk, please start the recording. Thank you. Today is Wednesday, June 14th, 2023, and I'd like to call today's city council meeting to order. Can we please stand and say pledge allegiance? All right. Clerk, may I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Casberg?
Here.
Councilmember Boyle?
Here.
Councilmember Strobin, or Councilmember Servini?
Present.
Mayor Strobin?
Present.
All right. Clerk, please call up any public comments from the audience.
Alphilla, 152 West 15th Street. Hey, I got some shout-outs. I want to thank the Little League for supplying hot dogs to the veterans. You know, I went down and had mine. Want to thank all the people involved with the Memorial Day festivities out at the cemetery. Want to thank, was it Mr. Cameron from the high school? Dominique Stubbs was the student who played taps. I want to thank the city for providing the microphone and the, and the speaker. The Lions Club for helping us out, and of course, all the veterans over there. Let's see, what else? Let's see, what else? This is all off the top of my head, so you wouldn't know that normally. But, yeah, they had, we had, we had the Pride Weekend on the Sunday out there. Went up there, there was people having fun. Don't have any problem with that, you know. Last week, what was it? La Center United had their forum, you know, whatever you want to call it. And it must have, I was expecting to be, you know, very fun, but it was kind of boring, and I had to leave early. So all I can assume is they've solved all the pronoun stuff and everything else because there was nobody up there complaining about it. And so, yeah. And, oh, and then Sunday, you notice there was a garage sale down at the old bank building, which is going to be a coffee place. If you'd have stopped in there, how many people stopped in there? Raise your hand if stopped in. You'd have got a free cup of coffee. You'd have got a cookie. And if you were charming, you might even got a free hat.
Really?
You know, so the next time you drive by something like that, you might want to pull in because you never know what bling they're going to be giving you. You know, and that's River's Edge Coffee. God bless America.
Thank you, Al.
Jim Irish?
Jim Irish, 1653 East Heritage Loop, La Center, Washington. Good evening, mayor, council, and citizens. On Memorial Day, we had a fantastic show and presentation for the day and for the veterans in La Center. I asked a couple of people that I know and mentioned, well, I didn't see you down there. They came from River's Edge. They lived down there in River's Edge. And they said, we didn't hear anything about it. We didn't know anything about it. I said, it was on the reader board. He's, we don't see the reader board. That's for people coming into the city this way. He says, we come in that way and we go out that way because most of us are out there or else we are going out to the freeway this way. We never get to see the readers, the reader board. So I have a question for our fantastic staff, and you too, Tony. With ideology the way it is, isn't there a way that we could put another reader board that would not necessarily have to have a stanchion but could run off of information being fed to it up that side of the city also so that we have both sides of the city covered rather than just the reader board coming in here? We have a lot of new people coming in. Readers, or River's Edge out there is overflowing with people. Excuse me, we got the Highland going across the street from it, and we had the other one going up here on Aspen. Ladies and gentlemen, the old saying is, bring the people in here and the business will follow. That's true. But if the people don't know what we've got in the city or what we have going on, then they start looking elsewhere for things to take their time. Skate park is one of the biggest used areas around here, starting Monday, the 14th?
Friday.
Sixteenth for the skate park.
Yeah. Anyway, we've done a fantastic job and we have a really good staff, public work staff to take care of things. So I would suggest, I got 44 seconds left. I got, I would strongly suggest that we look at ways that we can keep the citizens on both sides of the city fully invested in what we have coming on. Thank you very much. And like Al says, God bless you all.
Thank you, Jim.
Kimberly Elbin?
Good evening. I just got off a fishing boat. Yes, the big one got away, but I did, we got four of them. And so.
Kimberly, can you state your name for the record?
Oh, yes, thank you. Kimberly Goheen Elbin, life citizen of Clark County. I've lived here for over 30 years where my mother was born, here in La Center. I couldn't attend the greet meeting for the new mayor, and I'm sorry about that. However, I hope that there will be town halls monthly, if not gatherings for the citizens to unite here in La Center. I think that's going to be a great time, especially with, you know, time passing. I actually would like to see no growth, no more growth. It actually put me in a big depression about 30 years ago, and that's okay. Somebody put their roof up and took away my sunrise. That's just a personal thing. But, you know, I realize people have to live somewhere and all that. I get that. But I am against, I speak at Clark County Council. They are going to be putting SkyRises, houses, the low income housing, thereby the Clark County Fairgrounds. I'm totally against that. We need to keep, keep Clark County as a country setting. And you can't do that with those homes going up. That'll probably be also mandated to house illegal immigrants. So God is always good. Speaking about the reader board, the group called the La Center United is a great group with wonderful intentions, yet it is funded and staffed by at, and possibly with agendas, obviously, by the reader board that they advertise the movement that is happening right now. I really resented it. I called up and said, well, let's have a heterosexual sign that goes up along with it. I mean, otherwise I'm discriminated against. I mean, it's not a joke. And so let's make sure that we watch out for that. Again, they are funded by the federal government, and right now, our federal government is going, well, Biden's a criminal, so this government's going to soon come to an end as far as history shows. I also want to share that I spoke at Vancouver. They took our first minute rights away, so we get to speak once every three months. And actually, you don't. It's a roundtable social situation, Marxist. And lo and behold, they didn't advertise it right. It wasn't up until Monday's agenda was not given to the public until Friday at 4:30 that there was an actual meeting for the public to attend and be able to speak about housing. So it was very important. I made a note that when they were done doing their official greetings and all this, I asked, I stood up and I said, how many citizens are here anyway? And there was only five that I knew of out of about 40 people. And why is that? Well, it's because they don't want people to speak up. We're in a Marxist state right now. You know, the state of Washington is ran by Inslee. He's a criminal. So is Biden. So let's kind of wake up, talk to your citizens, get our family back together because they actually.
Kimberly, you're out of time.
Drove us apart with that damn mask, excuse me, and the plandemic.
Thank you, Kimberly. Any other comments, Clerk?
There are no many, or no more cards from the audience.
All right. Any public comments? For those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak. Do we have any online? We have four. If you'd like to make a public comment, please press star six to unmute yourselves. State your name. All right, moving on. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
There are none.
That moves us on to the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, council. Next up, we will have Superintendent Peter Rosenkrantz. He will present an update on the La Center School District. Peter?
Good evening. Peter Rosenkrantz, Superintendent, La Center School District. I do have a couple, I have some announcements for, to kind of capture the success of the year and the progress we've made all year long and will continue to make into the next year. But I do want to acknowledge that it's Flag Day. So I'm surprised no one else noticed it was Flag Day. I mentioned it, but I don't know.
The flags were on the bridge, by the way.
I appreciate that. I love those flags. And so we had several members of the audience, and I know folks around our community that because we have an amazing event that happens every spring, which is our graduation. When my kids graduated from Union, they had tickets. You had like four tickets for spots because there are so many people graduating. We still had open seating and entire families can show up. Community, community members can show up to celebrate with our graduates, graduates. 98 graduates, amazing opportunity for kids to showcase what they've done for 12 years and where they're headed into the future. And so sending off another group of intelligent and motivated kids into the world, amazing. We are hiring. We have multiple pararete educator positions. And we've been, unlike other school districts, and nothing against them at all. It's just we're in a growing area. If we were reducing enrollment, it would be a different story. But we're growing in enrollment, and we are hiring. We had kindergarten, second grade, and third grade. Typically, with the, the past couple of years with everything going on, we'd have maybe 10, 15 applicants. A good position, we would have 20 applicants. We, most of those positions or all of those positions had over 80 applicants. What the third grade position, we hit over 100 applicants. So that's unheard of for us. It's a great indicator of some of what's going on with our district and what people are hearing, even though on the outside and in the papers and from a few voices, folks, it makes it sound like some chaos. But it really is. We are focused on our mission statement. We are focused on kids learning and growing brain cells. I'm super excited about where we're headed. So to some of that teaching and learning, we have new math materials for third through fifth grade, which means, which is the same math materials we have for kindergarten through second. So we have two sets of materials between kindergarten, fifth grade, and sixth grade through Algebra II. And the importance of that is for kids having to learn new materials, you lose about six months of learning. And for parents, when they want to help their kids, there's some consistency where we used to jump through four hoops or four different sets of materials. We served 125 kids this year in instructional or interventions for reading to help support reading growth from the COVID learning loss. We're making significant gains. We'll post some double digit gains in the fall when our scores, test scores come out for all the work that's going on. We're adding a math coach as well into this next year because we need to work on math. Math success, yes, but not as much as we'd like, and we need to develop or grow, grow our students. Significant professional development throughout the year to help work with our teachers. Shared leadership or administration and leadership or administration and teachers work together to develop instructional plans and grow their craft instructionally. And then significant advanced placement growth and CTE courses at the high school. So all focused on grade 13, so when the kids graduate, they have a plan where they had facilities wide or improving, continuing to improve safety this summer within the buildings. And then I just want to thank our partners. We have a significant number of industry partners, the city of La Center, Ailene, Tribal Foundation, the works. We, we work to partner with anybody and everybody to help our kids have opportunities and see the opportunities out there in the world and right here in La Center because it's a great place to raise a family, live, work, and play. So thank you. It's been an amazing year, and I'm looking forward to next year as well.
Perfect.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter. All right. Next up is the mayor's report. The farmer's market will start June 22nd at 4:00 PM and will continue on Thursday nights through the summer. I encourage everyone to come out and support the vendors. Concerts in the Park Series starts Saturday, June 24th at 5:30 PM. Harvest Gold and Mary Ann Fleming will be performing. Next up is the attorney's report. We would like to welcome City Attorney Sean McPherson, who is filling in for Bronson during his vacation this month.
Thanks, Mayor, Council. I'll, I'll have some additional comments as relates to the Blake fix, which is on your agenda. I just, only other thing I'd add is that I have had preliminary discussions with Bronson about some other additions to the criminal code, and I would anticipate making a few revisions there and again, presenting that to council likely in conjunction with Bronson when he comes back next month. Thank you.
Any questions for the city attorney? Next up is council comments. Councilmember Fox?
Good evening. Happy to be here. Happy to see so many familiar faces and some new ones. Don't have a whole lot. Mayor kind of said most of what I was going to say. But I just want to say thanks, Peter, for just always coming up and showing up each and every two weeks and sharing what's going on in the school. You're right, being in a small community like this, we just have, we get to be more present and I think connect to really what matters, which is, you know, we get to have close connections with our schools and just have so many things to be excited about, about knowing every, you know, kid that walks down the street and knowing the parents. That is the only way to raise your child, I believe. It's just create such a a safety net and the children, you know, they're kind of in their own little bubble here. That's what I love, you know, and obviously giving them the, the life tools that they need, but also giving them that, you know, that small town feel that everybody wants for their kiddos. You know, I have my 20 year class reunion coming up this August, so I'm very excited to go there and also be a member of the city council. And I'm really excited to connect, you know, I had 95 in my graduating class, so it sounds like we're about the same a little bit. So, yeah, and I just want to say thanks, Chief, a lot for your work with the Ridgefield and all of the things that's come up to this point. I know that's probably taken a lot. And just for all of the city employees and everything that you guys do, we just appreciate you guys. And, you know, our grounds look beautiful and it's just a beautiful place to live. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Casberg?
Good evening. Thanks for coming tonight, and I completely agree with Councilmember Fox. I think that we as council members forget to acknowledge all of the city staff at the meetings. So thank you guys again. You know, the, the school district was one of the reasons that, that we moved here 10 years ago. So it wasn't Peter. It was before he was there, but I'm, I'm still really happy that, that he's here now. I think it's gotten better. So thanks, Peter. We appreciate that. Well, speaking of the, the school, the elementary school had their field day on Monday, and I went and spent the day out there and got a decent sunburn at the, on the field. Carl Ashmore, who runs the concession stand at the, at the ball fields, donated all of those popsicles. So I helped hand out the popsicles to all the kids and most of the teachers. There was only two kids that didn't want a popsicle and a couple of teachers. So that was, it was pretty popular and it was, it was hot, but it was a good day. And it was, the coolest thing was my son's been involved in Little League for four years now, five if you count the partial season with, with COVID. But it was amazing how many of those kids that I, that I knew from seeing them at the ball field. And so that was just really cool and kind of reminds you of why this is such a cool place to live. So, yeah, that's really all I got. So thanks for coming and thanks for those that showed up and listened to the presentation earlier. We would like your input, so please send us emails. Have your friends go back and watch the presentation. That'll be posted online. And definitely give us the, the feedback because we can't make those decisions without, without the citizens weighing in. So, thank you.
What he failed to tell you is that he was accused of cheating in the race on field day.
I was, but she'll admit that I did not participate in the, in the race.
Yeah, you left me out of the whole thing. I wasn't even there. It's okay. In his story, I wasn't even there. You know, it's okay.
I forgot. I did. She, Melissa Fox, Councilmember, showed up towards the end of the day.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Boyle?
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, everybody, thanks for coming out tonight. I'm just going to kind of piggyback a little bit on what Councilmember Casberg said. I guess, you know, we've sat up here and beat a dead horse night after night through these meetings about how important public safety is and how it's been our number one goal. And I'm glad to see that that's coming to fruition. I am a slightly, you know, I don't guess, I don't know if disappointed is quite the right word, but I would hope that more people would get involved and participate in, you know, what we're trying to accomplish here. I know a lot of people have opinions about it and lots to say. And, you know, we're trying to make our decisions with the best information that gets provided to us. But what it comes down to is what the citizens want. And if we, the more participation, the better. And I think everybody. if we, the more participation, the better. And I thank everybody that comes out here night after night and, and does all of that. But, um, there's a lot of people out there that, you know, think that, you know, they have an opinion and I want to hear it. So I guess that's just, I'm asking for more people to get involved. Like Casey said, send us emails. Um, we'd be happy to chat and hear what you have to say. Other than that, have a good night.
Thank you. Council member Serbini.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I too would like to welcome everyone and thank you for coming once again. Al, I always appreciate all the dedication that you and Jim and all of your team have. Seeing the beautiful flags on the bridge is part of what makes our community special. And I think it puts smiles and heartwarming feelings, um, for all of us. Every time we see them flying beautifully in the sky. I know every time I come across the bridge, it sure does. So thank you for, um, whether it's rain, shine, or all of the elements that you do to make that happen for us. I'm so also sorry that I missed, uh, this year's, um, Memorial Day, um, presentation and honoring those that have served. I wasn't, um, able to do so, but I always enjoy being there. It's very touching and moving. And important part of what we should recognize each and every year is the true meaning of Memorial Day isn't the hot dogs. It isn't the barbecues. It isn't really the family gatherings. It's the people that have served. I attended the, the Center United, um, community presentation and, um, it, I think it helps parents understand how to have the dialogue with, with their kids when they, when they bring up difficult topics. So I would encourage us to continue to be involved and go to the different types of sessions that, uh, the Center United hopes for the community. It was good to see the turnout. Um, and a lot of question, you know, hard questions were even asked by the attendees. You know, we're traveling new roads for all of us. So learning and opening up our mindsets and being willing to help the kids in any way that we can is always beneficial for keeping, um, our community what it is and our kids safe and on the right path and helping them, um, wherever we need to. I also want to mention, in addition to the graduation, we have the celebration of the accomplishments and scholarships that are held every year. And that is always a real, um, amazing evening to celebrate the dedication that the students have and the awards that they win from throughout Clark County and beyond. And the amount of money that flows through this little community is just totally, um, amazing. And we're one of the few communities, I think, throughout Clark County. Um, I don't know what the total percentage is. Perhaps Peter can say, but the number of scholarships that our kids win is very, um, high. And it's because all of us, um, you know, our organizations here in the community and community members and like-minded individuals and, and businesses and, um, graduates alike come together to support one another and to make that, um, additional schooling, whether it's vocational, technical, cosmetology, or a four-year or a doctorate degree. It doesn't matter. It shows the kids that they could try and put their minds, um, to the goals that they, and the passions that they have and accomplish them. So it's, it's really a rewarding and heartwarming, um, evening to attend. Um, and that's all. Thanks.
Thank you. I did want to add one thing real quick. Our turnout for the Q and A session was excellent. So I wanted to thank everyone that attended. Especially on a night that was competing with Peter and the awards and scholarship night, which I do apologize, Peter. We, we did not see that on the calendar, so it conflicted, but we had a great turnout. It lasted for quite a while. I don't even think we left until after eight. And we will be doing them, Kimberly, uh, every quarter. Okay? Thank you. That brings us to staff reports. Uh, Tony Cooper will present the chip seal staff report. Tony?
City Council, my name is Tony Cooper and the city engineer for the center. And, uh, this staff report is a request, uh, to award
Tony, can you pull the mic towards you a little, please?
Okay, sorry. Thanks. The staff report is to, uh, request award for the 2023, uh, chip seal project on Highland Road and 339th. And, um, let's have a little bit. So just to, just to go into background about this, the city receives about $60,000 a year from gas tax and pavement and, um, vehicle tabs. And that's an average. That's, uh, over the years, that's kind of what goes up and down. But, um, um, that, it went, what it's used for is for basically, um, maintaining the pavement surface. In, in many ways, it could be a chip seal, could be a slurry seal, could be an overlay. Uh, this, the operation staff use this, uh, fund for filling potholes, crack ceilings. So there's a lot of things that it's used for, but predominantly it's supposed to be used for pavement preservation. So the, the past year, that budget was, uh, that fund wasn't used. And so right now there's about $97,000 in that pavement preservation budget. It's not called that in the, in the budget. I think it's called public works maintenance, uh, in the budget. But that's, that's really what it's called. Um, so, um, the city, uh, city personnel evaluated the different roads in the center and tried to, tried to find the, the one that would be, uh, most worthy of, of repairs. And what we found is that, uh, that, that Highland Road and 339th has been, has been wearing, has surface attrition, has some cracking in it and it, it really needs some repairs. So, um, city staff put together some plans and, uh, bid package and advertised it in the Colombian on May 16th. And the, the plans were hosted on the city, uh, website. So the contractors would just go to the website and download plans. As it turns out, um, there was only one bid that came in. So just to, just to kind of, uh, give an overview of what the, what was, what was bid was the, the chip seal itself was bid, which, which is good, which extends from 24th to just, uh, south of the high school. A little ways, about 200 or 300 feet north of, of, uh, Forest Street. And, um, uh, there was a couple of different alternatives and the reason why we, we, we had alternatives is to make sure that we were stayed in budget with this, with this, uh, budget that we have for pavement preservation. The first one, first alternate was, is, um, is to, uh, stripe, uh, stripe the road. And that includes centerline striping, uh, pavement, um, reflectors and crosswalk striping at the high school. So there was a lot of things on that that had to be striped. Uh, the second part of it was called a, it's called a fog seal, which a fog seal is really, um, it, it's, 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 it's an asphalt, a liquid asphalt that has water and it's called an emulsion. Anyway, it, 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 um, sometimes it could, it could be sprayed on these chip seals and it, it makes the road a little bit more, you know, it, it's not as rough and then it also protects the road a little bit longer. It's not essential, but it, but it does help a little bit with the life of a, of a, uh, chip seal project. So those were the alternates. And so, uh, Santa Fe, Sierra Santa Fe, um, is the contractor that bid it. They're a local contractor. They're out of, uh, Ridgefield and they built a, they, they built a lot of projects around here. So, um, their, their budget was within the engineer's estimate. Engineer's estimate was just around $100,000, a little over 100,000. So the base bid, uh, that they bid was, uh, 56,000, just over 56,000. The, uh, alternate bid was just, uh, under 17,000, alternate one and alternate two, which the fog seal was a little over 20, 20,000. So the total of those three turned out to be, uh, 93,777. And then the alternate, uh, one with the base bid is 70,000, 73,000, uh, $547. So, um, although, although the tire bid was, is within the budget of what we have, um, staff is not recommending doing all of those because there has to be some money left over for, for maintenance program to, you know, use, use that money for, for, um, uh, you know, the, the, um, filling potholes and, and the crack ceiling. So, uh, what staff is, is recommending is that we award the base bid with the alternate one was, which is a striping for 73,547 dollars. And that leaves a little over $23,000 left in the budget so that that could be used throughout the rest of the year to, uh, you know, to do these other little repairs on the road. So I, I also have a bid tab here. There's not really much to it. It just shows the alternates. And the base bid and what I, what I've summarized here, but that gives you an idea of what, you know, what goes into that bid. So, um, that's a recommendation. Does, does, uh, council have any questions about it?
Is there any warranty that comes with this work?
No, um, well, usually contractors will warranty something for about a year. So, but, uh, this, this, this contractor has done work for us before. On Pacific Highway in 2016, they did a, um, chip seal. And it, it lasted a long time and there was some, you know, pavement, um, overlays that were done due to the, some of the construction along Riverside. You know, Riverside Estates, but it lasted a long time. So, you know, I, I'm sure if something happened to it within a short time, I, I'm sure the contractor would, would, uh, you know, try to make, amend that and try to, try to repair that as best as possible. I don't think that's going to happen. That's just, you know, they, they do, like I say, they do work all over the state. In fact, all over the West Coast, they're really reputable contractors. So, uh, and like I say, we've had, we've seen it work before. So I don't anticipate anything happening, but you never know. But, um, yeah.
Does the fogging application, does that give any sort of a length of time that it's going to further preserve the?
Well, so what it does is it, it kind of seals that rock a little bit. So it doesn't, you know, with, with a chip seal, cars driving over it, eventually some of that rock pops out and, uh, over time, the fog seal can kind of seal that and kind of prevent some of that from happening. You don't see those very much in residential streets because the chip seals, you know, they're kind of rough. And so that's not an application we'd use for that, but, but on, on, you know, Highland Road 339th, that's perfect for that, that type of application. But it does extend the life a little bit. How much? I don't know. But, but right now, like I say, it, it would use up pretty much all the budget that we, that we have.
What replenishes, what replenishes that budget?
The, the vehicle tab, vehicle tabs and gas tax. So every year, like I say, that's about what, what comes into the C of the center. All jurisdictions use that, that for, for that.
So we get roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year?
About 60,000.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, the, the, the bid, the bid was close to 100,000 for that project. We, we didn't, um, we didn't use that. We didn't use that, uh, any of the budget last year. So there's two years of budget that is accumulated, but our maintenance, our maintenance guys have used some of that budget. So.
And when it, what day of the year does that happen on? So like?
On, on what year of the year, the, the project will, when they will start?
No, I just mean like, when does that money?
I think it comes in throughout the year. Uh, and, and our street fund is basically combined with, um, so it's vehicle tab, fuel tax revenues, and then the general fund can also and often does supplement our street fund.
I see. Yeah. Okay. I mean, I never agree with like totally emptying a fund, but I don't take this.
And this may not pertain specifically to this, but I'm just curious, uh, where did the funding come from for the crack ceiling that we just did last year, I believe?
That was from the same street fund. So we, we generally do that, uh, with our own crews and our own equipment. So we don't have to bid that work out.
Okay.
But, you know, we actually, as Tony mentioned, we didn't do a project last year. So we specifically increased the budget this year so we could do a larger project. A portion of that money that's staying in this fund, I'm hoping to use for a pavement condition index of city streets so that we can, um, have a model to look at, you know, not only what streets are, where we should be focusing our funds on to preserve them so that they don't degrade and cost additional money to repair. But then it also can be a tool that we can, and the council can use as we're looking at other funding options like tab fees potentially in the future for, uh, road maintenance and what it really costs to maintain, uh, and keep our roads in a serviceable condition.
Thank you.
Brian, I have a question, another question for you. Um, and you can help. My memory, there were a couple of projects that you brought forward earlier in the year that were over budget. Do they come from a separate account?
So the community center was one that would be, um, from the capital projects fund, um, which is a little bit different.
I thought there was a road project that you presented.
Yeah. And then we had the sinkhole, uh, which again would be a stormwater fund instead of the road fund. So, uh, neither of the current over budget projects or unexpected projects, um, would impact this road fund. But we will be probably talking to you later this year about a budget amendment to, to replenish or, um, backfill for those projects.
Okay. So we're not impacting.
If we have another ICE event, does that get paid for through this?
So this is the street maintenance fund. So an ICE event where our crews are out, you know, working overtime plowing would come from, you know, same road fund, but a different line item. Uh, this is specifically for maintenance. That would be like a labor line item that would increase for, um,
Okay.
for, for all the time.
What about the sand and gravel and spray that goes down?
Generally, we have enough of that on hand and it's, it's not a huge cost overall compared to, to other work.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I have a, please inquiry here. So the, the number there is to be plus tax, correct?
It, it is taxes included.
Taxes included, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, because it's a paper project.
The other, um, question I had, and again, this, has the city adopted it like a 10% cost overrun authority to the administration? Or is that if they go over, they have to come back?
Well, I, I know, I know what, what we're supposed to do is, is, uh, come back to, to council and, and give a overview of staff report of what, you know, a project after it's done. And at that time, we would probably bring that up. It, it, we, it would have to depend on, it would depend on where, you know, if overall of our projects are under budget, all the projects are under budget, all the, the, you know, street projects and others, the other projects within that are within budget. If not, there has to be a budget amendment, but it kind of depends on, on, we don't have that, uh, what you're talking about, the 10%, but, but we, we are required to, to come before council and give staff reports at the end of projects.
So you don't, you don't build that into your motion, then it's a case by case. You have to bring it back.
Case by case, yeah.
Tony, do we have other projects that are coming before us for the summer?
We, we have one that's probably going through the sewer fund, which was the actuator valve installation. It's the, we have to replace a valve up there on, uh, on the forest main. And so I think that's, that's not, I don't know if that's in the sewer budget or not. We haven't discussed that, but it's, it's a necessary thing for the sewer system.
Yeah, that one was budgeted in sewer. I don't think we have any other road projects planned this year. We have a few other design projects that are road projects that will be coming to council, but as far as construction projects, for this road specifically, um, I think this is the last one that we have planned this year.
Okay.
Not thinking of any others off the top of my head.
Thanks.
All right. Any other questions? Can I get a motion?
Um, I moved to award the bid from Sierra Santa Fe in the amount of 72,547 dollars and zero, zero cents.
Second.
It's been moved in second? Can I get a roll call? Are we going to roll? No, we'll just do a, yeah. All those in favor, I, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Brian. Next up, Brian Cast will present the Public Works and Community Development Staff Report. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Uh, hit a few highlights here. Uh, first, I, I wanted to thank Tony for, um, putting together all. Uh, first, I, I wanted to thank Tony for, um, putting together all the bid documents and the plans for that work. Um, it's good to have a, a road maintenance project going here. So like I said, we missed one last year, so, um, we're excited to, to have that structure and road be, uh, improved before there's some development happening that we'll be talking about here in just a moment. Uh, on the public works side, um, it's summer and painting work has begun on our streets. We started out with the paw prints in, in advance of the graduation, uh, so make sure that those were painted and visible for our graduating class. Um, and then we'll also be moving on to streets or, uh, center lines, curbs, fog lines, all that sort of stuff, crosswalks as well. Uh, in the park section, the splash pad, uh, equipment is up and in place, and we will be making the splash pad operational on the sixteenth after school is out. Uh, over in wastewater, um, Emery Oldman, uh, who is our operator in training, uh, is progressing well. He's now, uh, past his thirty-day, um, of his thirty-day, thirty, sixty, ninety-day, um, orientation successfully, and he is also at the point where he's able to, um, go on call and work weekends to help bring some relief to, um, Bill and to Jay. Uh, so that's, we're excited to be growing our wastewater staff from within. Um, we also, uh, our staff found and repaired a potable water leak on the line that serves the, um, laboratory building. And based on the reduction in water uses, we anticipate that that's going to save eighteen thousand dollars a year, uh, so a pretty significant, um, leak that we've found and repaired there. Um, we also worked with Clark Pewee and they, um, gave us a thousand dollar relief, um, for completing that work. So, um, nice work to the staff there. Um, we had been seeing some water for a little while, and we're under the impression it was groundwater, um, but it turned out it was potable water leak. So, uh, kudos to Jay for, uh, finding that and, and finding the location of it and getting it fixed. Uh, on the engineering side, um, if you recall, we received about an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar grant for the citywide systematic horizontal curve warning sign and roadway departure. It's a very long project. Basically, it's a safety project, uh, signage, striping, and, um, other roadway treatments to help, uh, people stay on the road instead of go off the road. Um, we had, uh, put up that out for proposals. Uh, the first round, we actually did not receive any proposals, so we went out again and received two proposals, and we have selected an engineering firm by the name of DJNA. Um, they are new to working with the city, but, um, the project manager actually lives in town here, so we are looking forward to working with them on that project. Um, we have to work with Wash Dot to get that awarded, but, uh, hope to have that sign underway or the design contract, um, to council here soon for approval so that we can get the design underway. Uh, over on the community center, uh, Lee Contractors is making good progress. The, uh, appliances are all here, the hoods here, uh, they're working on the hood, um, installation as we speak. And, uh, we also have coordinated with them on parking lot repairs. This is the other portion of that contract, um, and they are planning to start that work, uh, after the Little League season wraps up on the ninth of July and have everything done and the parking lot, uh, ready hopefully in time for our days. If the paving's not done, the parking lot will still be gravel and usable, however, for our days, and that is a requirement of the contract.
Hey, Brian, with the, um, community center, I was just curious, is, uh, I don't even know what to call it, the thing that's being built on top of it, is that just architectural or is that?
It screens the, uh, hood vent outlet.
Okay, nice. It's gonna, it looks like it's gonna look nice.
Yeah, it's, they're gonna paint it so that it matches the rest of the building, um, and it just, it kind of blocks the big metal structures where, where they, uh, the new fancy hood vents out.
Nice.
Um, one other item that's not on the list here that I want to cover, uh, we had a coordination meeting with Wash Dot about their summer work on I five, and one of the main projects that's going to be impacting the city here is, uh, the North Brown, um, Bridge over the North Fork, which is the one just south of Woodland, right before you get to Woodland. Um, that work is going to be starting in July and is a two-month project to, um, repair the deck. Um, if you probably noticed, there's, um, trucks have to drive in the center, um, so it's basically fixing that, um, the deficiencies in that structure. However, um, it's going to have some pretty significant traffic prob-, um, backups that are caused during that two months of work. Um, the Wash Dot is expecting a seven-mile backup on Fridays, which would be, um, all the way past Ridgefield and three to five miles other days of the week. So, um, we're working with Wash Dot and our partners up in Woodland to try and, you know, mitigate as best we can for people that decide that they're tired of waiting in traffic and cutting through town here, um, up to Woodland and bypassing that. Um, but inevitably, there will be some, some traffic impacts on our local streets from July through September. Um, so as I, as we have more information on that, we'll share that, but, um, something to keep in mind, and, and we're going to be reaching out to the community and informing as well.
Five to seven mile backups?
Five to seven mile backups.
So you're saying I five north, right? From like Woodland all the way back?
Exactly. So from like the south side of Woodland all the way probably to around the rest areas on Friday.
And they're just projecting on Fridays that or not every day of the week?
Friday's the worst day.
Sure.
Um, so Friday's a seven mile backup. And yeah, and I think, uh, Mondays, Monday through Thursday were five, and on the weekends it was three or something like that, but, uh, yeah.
Obviously peak times.
And that's the peak time.
Yeah. Wow, interesting, okay.
So.
Good to know. Yikes.
Uh, over on the building department side, um, permits are continuing to come in, um, at a, at a pretty steady pace. Uh, to date, we're at a hundred and seventy-two permits this year, including, uh, seventy-three single-family homes and a commercial tenant improvement project. Um, we already, let's see here, Riverside, they have, uh, forty homes currently under construction there in Riverside, um, and seven of those have received occupancy. Onto the community development map, just a couple of things to highlight here, um, out at the junction, um, the convenience store framing is continuing to progress, and we understand that the, uh, hotel construction is, will be starting in August out there. Um, and then over on the, uh, east side of town, there's, uh, several projects that are going to be starting up construction here in the near future. Project number one on the list, Lockwood Meadows, uh, we anticipate giving them a grading permit here probably in the next week or so. Um, and then also, uh, Thirty-seven Aces View and Forty-four Valley View, um, are progressing through engineering review as well. So, um, our anticipation is that all three of those projects will be under construction, um, here in the next month or so. With that, happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Um, is there going, has there been any talks with those contractors about, because we had the problem with the dust last year up at Stevens Landing?
Yeah, so in our pre-construction meetings, we'll address that with, um, it's, you know, it happens every year where the soil's really good till it's not, and it gets dry, and then it goes from, you know, too wet to dusty pretty quick. So, um, really just working with them to make sure that they're, um, you know, keeping water, their water trucks circulating and, um, you know, ideally sticking to rock haul routes instead of going through the dusts. But, uh, I anticipate, you know, it's going to be a, a point of coordination with them, um, on these projects, just like every project.
Do we have somebody, geez, do we have somebody that kind of oversees?
It's really a staff level effort, so it's Tony out there a lot or myself, um, but really Tony's doing the, on the, on boots-on-the-ground inspection on all these projects.
All right, yeah, just last year I did go around, there are some of my friends that live up in those neighborhoods, they did see a significant amount of dust, and hopefully we can try and prevent that.
Yep.
Brian, will we be, um, putting a article in the Reflector in the Colombian about the chip sealing project? Because there's going to be a lot of traffic, um, that's impacted that comes from the north, um, not only just the local traffic, plus the construction traffic up there on three thirty-ninth?
Yeah, we will do some outreach. The good thing about a chip seal project is that they can, they can go relatively quickly, so it's, you know, it's only a day or two of impact.
Helping them plan.
But yeah, we will, as we get that schedule, um, there's traffic control requirements, and we'll do outreach through the website and otherwise as well.
Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Brian. We do have two ordinances on the agenda tonight. First one, Brian Cast will present ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero-eight illicit discharge code.
It's such a horrible title.
Yeah, we, we should have jazzed that one up a little bit. Uh, thank you again, Mayor. Um, so as we discussed at the first look, um, we really currently with our city code have a, a limited ability to regulate, um, discharges or dumping to our storm sewer system, and the water that enters, uh, the catch basins and goes through the storm sewer system ultimately ends up, uh, in our surface waters in town here, whether that's wetlands or, um, the East Fork and the Lewis River. Um, and discharges that are not stormwater or, um, you know, pollutants like paint or something like that can harm not only the wildlife that lives there, but the habitat, um, and it can also damage the infrastructure itself. So, um, to address that, we are proposing to add a new chapter to Title thirteen of the city's code that will give us the ability to regulate, uh, discharges to the storm sewer system. Um, the code includes process to inspect, regulate, and enforce discharges. Um, and enforcement would include potential suspension of connections, uh, written warnings, and the ability for the city to cover costs of remediation if there is any cleanup costs, uh, associated with, um, someone dumping something to the storm system. So, uh, at this time, happy to answer any questions about the ordinance. Uh, since the last time, the, the only change has been, um, the elimination of, uh, discussion of, um, wash water from car washing activities, uh, as council requested, uh, the rest of the code remains the same. So, um, happy to answer any questions before council opens the public hearing, uh, and then if there's any comments or questions from the public, we'll, happy to address those as well.
Any questions?
Straightforward.
All right. All right, at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing at seven twenty-four. Are there any public hearing comments from the audience?
Um, let me see here. I wrote some notes. Well, as far as that leak, I saw it a few months ago, and I'm wondering, I, I now, I was going to ask if it was fixed. Um, what I'd like to know is, was it polluted? And, um, uh, it, kind of what, what, what was, uh, you know, in that leak? And then, um, let me see here. Uh, we have had a, quite a few nice weekends here prior to you opening up the water park. I'd kind of like to see it opened up maybe in, um, May, you know, we could do a ten-day, twenty-day forecast. I was looking out there and it wasn't there a few days ago, and I thought, boy, those kids would just love that water park today. So if it's not anything that's too hard, maybe that next week or, uh, next year, let's, you know, look up the, uh, the weather for that. I do appreciate the quarterly town halls, um, and, uh, let's see. Well, the stormwater, has, has there been an example of somebody doing that? I mean, we're not going to want to flush stuff down our toilet, and I'm going to say it tonight, I've had this on my heart for a few years. If women, uh, the oceans are full of wood fiber, and the wood fiber gets into our fish, their lung or their gills, right? So it's only natural that we're polluting the hell out of the earth. With that said, it, it's just a hygiene thing, but if women could somehow take their toilet paper and put it in a bag, put it to the earth, burn it, whatever, instead of putting it down the toilet, think of the millions and millions and billions of, you know, saving our water. It's a, I know it starts at home, folks, it's a good laughing thing here, but really, if you think about it, you know, you're going to put it somewhere. Do we want to put it down the toilet or put it in a paper bag?
Thank you. Any other public, uh, comments from the audience?
You know, I took a few minutes to look at the, uh, two people that are, uh, here going to be voted on or whatever you guys do for that.
Kimberly, the three minutes are up and?
Oh, they were?
Yeah.
Oh, well, I just wanted to say that, uh, one was very lengthy, and I appreciated it. Thank you.
Thank you, Kimberly. Are there any comments from those calling in? If there are, press star six to unmute yourselves and speak. Do we still have callers, clerk? Okay, are there any comments to be read?
There are none.
Okay. Oh, there aren't. Oh, I thought you said there are.
Oh, I was like, what?
Sorry.
Um.
Okay.
Here you go. I move to adopt ordinance.
Hold on, hold on, I have to close. Yeah, I have to.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
All right, if there's no other comments at this time, I'd like to now close the public hearing at seven twenty-eight.
And I'll briefly address the, the questions that were raised. Um, so the, the discharge from the wastewater treatment plant, uh, if you were walking along, it's sort of tangentially related to this. So if you were walking along the trail there below the treatment plant, um, you know, over the last six, eight months, there was water sort of seeping from the hillside, it was, uh, drinking, a drinking water leak. So it was the, the potable water line that serves the laboratory there that, that was the leak that was repaired. Um, so, you know, not sewage and not harmful, um, but still not ideal wasting water. Um, and we actually have had a few instances of folks dumping stuff, you know, paints, oils, otherwise to the system, um, which is really the impetus behind this, this code, so.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, uh, any other comments from council? If not, can I get a motion for this ordinance, please?
I move to adopt ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash zero-eight as presented.
Second.
All right, since this is an ordinance, I would like a roll call on this, please.
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Mayor Thornton?
Mayor Strobin?
I, I don't know. Ordinance passes. Thank you, council and clerk.
We're not laughing at you, we're laughing with you.
It's been a long day, everyone, just so you know. All right.
It's a team.
That's right, it's a team. Okay, next up is ordinance twenty-twenty-three dash ten drug possession. Um, and this one will be presented by the city attorney, Sean McPherson.
Mayor, council, um, the quick, quick background, uh, again, it's my second meeting covering for Bronson, I'm the city attorney for Cam, I'm also city attorney for White Salmon, and happy to have to be here, happy to have worked actually on this, um, new ordinance. Quick background, um, I think, but most folks are familiar with this, but essentially back in February twenty-twenty-one, the Washington Supreme Court invalidated and declared unconstitutional, um, Washington's strict liability drug possession laws, and that related to cocaine, heroin, fentanyl. Um, the legislature provided for a fix in the summer of twenty-twenty-one, um, but in that fix, they indicated that for the first two, um, arrests, that they were referred to, uh, treatment. Um, and it made it very difficult for law enforcement to, to enforce. Um, the legislative session for this last session came in and the legislature finished that session, the regular session, without adopting a fix. And so the governor called them back into special session and said, this is your sole task, get this fixed. And they came up with, I think it took them a day, they came up with a fix, and so this is what we call the Blake Fix. Essentially, um, the timing is such, and the requirement is that for local enforcement purposes and what they've indicated now for drug possession, it's a gross misdemeanor, uh, which falls within the purview of, uh, the local municipalities as far as their enforcement powers, but you have to adopt it, uh, by reference. And so the purpose of this ordinance before you today is to adopt by reference, um, the changes to Chapter sixty-nine fifty in the RCW into the La Center Municipal Code. That'll allow, again, effective as of July one, uh, for enforcement to occur. So that's the presentation as far as, uh, you know, what the intent is, it's, it's a good fix, and I'd urge the council to adopt it. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the city attorney? Any questions for the city attorney?
No.
No? Okay. All right, Kimberly. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing at 7:33. Are there any public hearing comments from the audience? Can you please step up to the podium, Kimberly? We have to have it recorded. Thank you.
Kimberly Goheen Alvin, I would like a more in-depth description of what you're saying, especially when it has to do with Olympia and Inslee and legislation. I want to say something about that. Legislators actually are not elected. They write laws and they put it through to those of us to satisfy the citizens through a process. But those people that write these things and what's been going on since this pandemic, they have an agenda, just like Vancouver City Council. They have a, they're members of the United Nations. So anyway, sorry, I'm out of breath. I'm actually trying to quit smoking. So amen. Good luck.
So real quick, Kimberly, this was posted in our agenda packet. Yeah. So you'd be able to find all that information of what the ordinance actually included. This has also been publicized on the news or in the news since it passed in May. Was it in May, Casey?
It was May, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah. So it's been highly noted throughout the community and the state of Washington. If you go back through the agenda, you'll be able to read up about it. The council's been, we've had a few meetings on it. So the council is very aware of this entire ordinance. So that's why the briefing or the description was brief. Are there any other public hearing comments?
Al Philo, 152 West 15th Street. You know, if you don't pass this, that means you got nothing to enforce. You know, so I strongly recommend that you vote yes. Thank you. God bless America.
Thank you, Al. Any other comments from the audience? For those that are calling in, please hit star six to unmute yourself and state your name. Are there any comments to be read, clerk? None. All right. I would like to now close the public hearing at 7:35. Are there any other comments from the council?
No.
Yes. I couldn't agree with you more, Al. This particular ordinance gives us as far as a municipality and the police that cover our area, the authority to actually deal with those that have illicit drugs, which is a more appropriate title for this than the sewer discharge, but I'm getting beside myself. So I think, you know, it's imperative that, that we really pass this ordinance to give them the power to actually pull over and and as well as address the, those that have these and that are impacting our kids. And, you know, it's the only option that we really have. We, we certainly wish that the legislature would have written a stronger and more effective and more broadly written for language, but this is what we get. So to give them the power for our local feet on the street, this is really what we need to do as a council.
I'll just add to that, that, you know, this, this RCW, the, the the decision that was passed in the, in the extended session is far better than what the expiring Blake fix, the Blake decision was. It's not perfect. You know, it could be a lot better like, like Councilmember Servini said, but it's definitely far better than what it was. And the other thing I think that we need to keep in mind is, is and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the legislation specifically stated that a city can't make a more restrictive drug possession. So it's kind of twofold. We're not able to make it any more restrictive and we need it in, in place so that municipal police can enforce this under city code.
Yes, that's correct. They
Thank you.
legislature preempted, they call it preempted the field. In other words, local jurisdictions aren't allowed by law to step in and create anything more restrictive. So that's called, that's the concept of preemption, and that's what the legislature specifically indicated in this, in this legislation. So you're correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Can I get a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2023 dash 10.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote on that, please?
We'll try this again. Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance passes. Thank you, council. All right. That takes us to, we have no consent on finish, new business. Counsel, we do have new business on the agenda this evening. Maria Swinger Enskeep will be going over the interview process to fill the vacancy for city council position number four.
Good evening. So the way that this will work is that we have pre-submitted questions from the current council members. We will interview one candidate at a time while the other candidate is in the conference room. We will then switch and interview the second candidate. They will have a time of three minutes per question. Council will then break to executive session and come back and make a motion to appoint one of the candidates. Council, do you have any questions? Okay, so we'll start with Ms. Linda Tracy and Alex, if you can please escort Ms. Myrna Leha to the conference room. I would appreciate it. Thank you. So Linda, if you want to come to the microphone, I will read the questions, but you also are welcome to make notes on the paper that's in front of you if you'd like to. So the first question was submitted by council member Servini. And it is, what specific areas do you feel the council needs to improve upon to further strengthen the city, creating a more resilient, thriving community?
I I think just outreach into the, into the city. You know, when I was on city council before, people would come to me and they would complain about a certain subject. And I would always say, go to the city council. Speak your mind. And I think more outreach into the community saying, people, we're not awful people. We would be more than happy to hear your questions and your concerns. And I just think that the more people that come with questions and concerns, the better the council is able to adapt and work on those things. So.
Thank you. Next question was submitted by council member Fox. And she said, how can you add value to our current council?
I think sort of the same thing. I think, I think the more, the more we're involved in our community, the more we have thoughts and, and reasons for why we need to be involved in our community will add depth to us as a council. I know when I was on council before years ago, everything that I heard, everything that I committed myself to, to participating in, I learned more about the city and, and more about how it worked and more about the wastewater treatment plan and more about the finances. And it just gave me more depth. And I would always say to myself, wow, I never knew that that's how that worked. So I think that that would be a good way.
Thank you. The next question was submitted by council member Boyle. Besides working on behalf of our constituents, how else do you plan to establish yourself as a leader in the community?
Well, I'm, 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 I think I am certainly a leader in the community already. And I think there's always room for improvement. I've, I'm getting ready to celebrate 20 years with the Miss Teen La Center Scholarship Program this year. I was one of the presidents of the La Center City Council, the La Center Chamber of Commerce years ago. I was mayor pro temp for a couple of years on the council. I'm a member of the Hour Days Committee. So I try to get out as much as I can. I'm involved with the schools because I have grandchildren that go to the schools. So if people don't know me, if they haven't been around, I'm sorry. So, and I'm always available if somebody wants me. I think, I think that that's the most important thing. So.
Thank you. And lastly, council member Casper said, what are your thoughts on promoting development and creating sustainable sources of revenue for the city?
Yeah, that's a tough one. That's something that I have thought about since 2000, since I first moved here. Obviously, we all know that the problem with La Center is we have, what about a one square mile of, of city property. It's helped that we have now urban growth that has gone up to the, to the the junction. You know, I, I would love to have more businesses. I would love to figure out what the card rooms are going to do. Like, I know that the palace is now sold. What are they going to do with chips? Is that something that we're going to be able to use? There was a time years ago that we talked about on the city council where the Mexican restaurant and the tavern is building something on the back, like a little strip mall and having more businesses. I don't know where we can put them, but I would sure like to to figure that out. I'm so pleased that we're going to have a coffee shop that's going to go into the old bank building. That's going to be, you know, because what I said was, since we don't have Giovanni's anymore, we had pizza and ice cream. And now they're going to bring in ice cream. So that's going to be fun for the kids and yeah, I think, I think bringing in more business is what we need to try to do. I'm not sure how we can do that, but, but maybe we need to extend our city, our city limits a little bit.
Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Linda, Alex will actually take you to the conference room. Good evening, Myrna. If you want to come to the podium, the questions are up there. I don't think she wrote on them. You're welcome to if you needed to jot any notes, but so you can see them. So the first question was submitted by a council member Servini. What specific areas do you feel the council needs to improve upon to further strengthen the city, creating a more resilient, thriving community? And you have three minutes.
And you can pull that mic down.
Yes, you can.
I always have to do that.
That's okay.
I really would like to see the police protection. I know, like Sean said, beating that subject to death, but I'd like to see the police protection that to get resolved. I know Chief Richardson's been working on that. And I really would like to see a connection in the community. I've been going to the school board meetings and I really would like to see some communication between different people like Liz Servini mentioned that she had gone to that courageous, I forget what the whole title of it was that she went to that.
Courageous discussions.
Courageous, yes. So I want to see a closeness in our community and the police protection. I would like to see some businesses because I think we need that to get the infrastructure, the money for the infrastructure. And otherwise, I'm just, I love the city and I think there's just a great community to live in.
Thank you. Next question was submitted by council member Fox. How can you add value to our current council?
Well, once again, because I come from a law enforcement background, I do know a lot of people and I feel like that could be very helpful in bringing the police protection to the city. And I just feel because I am good at communicating with people, that I love everybody and I can talk to people and I just feel really because my heart's desire is to do the best that I can for this community. I'm going to be joining the Lions Club. I'm going to be very involved. I've been very civically involved as far as Clark County goes, and now it's going to be really focused on what I can do for this city and listening to the constituents and really wanting to give a voice to everybody and to do what the constituents want for this city.
Thank you. Your next question kind of touches upon that, is submitted by council member Boyle. Besides working on behalf of our constituents, how else do you plan to establish yourself as a leader in the community?
Well, I did sort of answer that one. Being involved in the Lions Club, I think is very important. Being on the city council is very important. And just my communication with people, I, I go out every day and I walk usually every morning and every evening. And I talk to people and I ask them, what are they concerned about? And the main issue is police and inflation. And I just really want to hear what they have to say about that. And they don't want the city to be too big, too much construction, but on the other hand, they realize that we do need to have, you know, the construction and we need businesses so we can have money for the infrastructure. It all comes back to that again.
And lastly, council member Casper said, what are your thoughts on promoting development and creating sustainable sources of revenue for the city?
Actually, I do want to see that because I don't see any way else that we can have the money to pay for the infrastructure. So we do have to have some building. We have to be responsible in that and what businesses that we can bring in, but we really do need to do that.
Thank you. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
I was waiting for her to come back before we move forward. Okay, thank you, candidates. We will now be going into an executive session for 10 minutes to discuss the qualifications of the applicants. All right. And time is 7:51. Just indicate, clarify the record decisions will be made upon return. Just indicate, clarify the record decisions will be made upon return. Oh, yes. Excuse me. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting back to order. We've come in out of executive session at 8:02. First of all, I'd like to thank both the candidates. You're both qualified. I enjoy seeing both of you up here and also in the general election. At this point, counsel, can I get a motion to nominate an applicant for the council's, City Council position number four?
So moved.
Make a motion on. I make a motion to appoint Myrna Leha as City Council position number four.
I second that.
That's it. Can we get a roll call vote, please, clerk?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, council.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you to both of you.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate your time.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The city clerk and director of administrative services, Maria Swinger Enskeep, will be swearing in Myrna Leha for the City Council position number four.
You guys don't want to be in pictures? Okay. Myrna, if you could raise your right hand and please repeat after me. I state your name here, and you can read it there, too, if you want.
I?
Do solemnly swear that I am a citizen of the United States and the State of Washington, that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States, and the Constitution and laws of the State of Washington, and will to the best of my judgment, skill, and ability, truly, faithfully, diligently, and impatient, impartially, perform the duties of the office of council member position four, City of La Center, in and for Clark County and the State of Washington, as such duties are prescribed by law. Congratulations, Councilmember Leha. Absolutely.
All right. That concludes our meeting for tonight. Can I get a motion to close?
So moved. Second.
Motion passes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I oppose.
I'm staying. I know, I got ahead of myself. Motion passes. Thank you, council. Thank you, everyone, for attending.